701, all meetings on board.
Let's just clarify, the United States of America, and to the Republic for what it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The record show all board members are present. Mr. Board has public notice been given?
Yes, it has.
Public comment. Per policy 121-02, a time limit may be established by the presiding officer. And per policy 121-05, board of education members may not comment on any public comment, even though permitted to do so by law. Tonight's public comment is going to be a little different. For those needing a translator, you'll be given six minutes. Only three minutes of that six will count towards the 30 for the overall time. Everybody else that does not need a translator, it's the normal three minutes allotment for public comment. And for those that have not filled this out, wishing to do public comment, please do so. And then bring it up here, or give it to Mrs. Coleman, or rather, she can give it to me. Then we can get you up there to do your public comment. We do have Bob Bellman wishing to address the board.
Thank you for allowing me, can everybody hear okay? Thanks for allowing me to come in and talk to you.
Hold on, one second.
Bob, there's a microphone right on the front, just push the...
Right here? Or the side, I'm sorry, this one.
We'll give Mrs. Dolan a second here to get the timer going.
Oh, I only get three minutes?
Yeah, three minutes.
Okay, you're running a half.
Mrs. Dolan, are you going to have a timer for the 30 minutes as well?
No.
Okay, thank you. So, go ahead.
Okay. I want to stop by tonight and mention to you that I think we need a recognition for the school building, being here, the high school building. The 25th anniversary went really quickly, I don't know whether you want to call it, 1995 to 2020, or 1996 to 2021. So it went by and we had COVID and you guys had a huge amount to do during COVID. I know it changed everything. But I have four people or five I'd like to mention that I think deserve recognition for this building being here and being in the great shape it is. Some of us remember the old high school. And this is such a vast improvement and our kids are so fortunate to be able to attend here. So, one person is Larry Plumerick. He was board president at that time, and the entire school board. Dale and Rachel Schultz were also on my list. Kramer Brothers Construction, Lauren Brown, I think, was head contractor. And then Mrs. Meyer, the lady, the wife of the district administrator at that time. Mrs. Meyer had a lot to do with the colors here and also some Frank Lloyd Wright declarations that you really need to find out about, did you want? So, this wasn't any slam dunk to get this referendum passed. Some of you remember that. I don't think it passed, I'm guessing around 100 votes or so. But of course, party was down at the Spudnut Shop for recognition of the passage of this. And it was probably coffee and a few Spudnuts. But it was a fun time and it just was a great thing to be able to pass this. Many of you know the history of how many failed referendums there were. This was really good, this was good that it passed. These people that I mentioned have not been contacted by me. They have not asked me to come in and plead on their behalf to get recognition. They're very humble people. I did not tell them I was coming in tonight. I want you to know that. Many of you know these people I named. Without them and their leadership, I don't think we would have had this high school. I remember a great controversy around this was the auditorium. And should we build that? And I know Mrs. Burholtz was a very strong advocate of it. And at the time, it was going to cost a million dollars to add on to the high school. And we got that through. So... Let me see, how much? Zero, I'm done. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Andrea Serna.
She was a wrong interpreter.
Okay, I want to thank everyone for...
One second. Emily, can you put that to six minutes, please? They need a translator, they get six minutes. Only three minutes counts towards the 30. All right, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I want to thank everyone for giving us the opportunity to express our concerns. Thank you. I want to inform that the past stays in the past. If I'm here, it's to help and speak for juveniles in this school. People that know me know that I'm not here for revenge. I'm also not a problematic person, and I'm just here to help. The motive to be here is because there are a lot of problems in this school. But not just here, but throughout the USA. We have the record for multiple shootings in this country. That's why we are all worried to fix that. We should all be worried to fix this. To find solutions and not blame anyone. If one program doesn't work, then find a different solution. In my opinion, with all due respect, I think that bullying, discrimination, and school shootings are problems that go hand in hand. Do you know why? A, because bullying ends in hating the other person. This is from the things said or done. B, racism. Racism is very verbally offensive and ends in hate as well. C, shootings end in hate, suicide, and hurt other people because of violence or trauma for a long time from bullying and discrimination. D, or there are also problems at home or at school. E, they are not terrorists and maybe they didn't want to be bad. It was a situation, and I'm not defending school shooters or accusing them. It simply was the violence. Now, some parents tell me that their children must be bullying and discrimination years ago. Mr. Paul told me that there is a form to fill out if there are complaints. You give the form to the principal and you are left with another copy. So then it informs the school that there's proof of complaints. That's everything for this year. Hopefully, the future principals receive this information now and from the past. Thank you.
Just hold on, one second here. Are you Andrea?
Yeah.
Okay, so you are speaking on behalf of Andrea?
Yes, of her.
Okay, reading her public comment then.
Maybe personally, my son is in this school and he hasn't had any problems. But he does see a lot of things. And that makes me realize that the kids need help. I would like that you would focus more on this that's going on. Then you see programs that haven't been successful in three or four years. If those programs are not working, if those programs are not working, then we should look at other programs that could possibly work. I have nothing against the school and I don't want to leave a bad mark on the school. I just don't want the other kids go through what my son went through five years ago. Thank you very much.
All right, Gabriela Merlos.
They've been talking about this before, so this is more familiar with the topic. I'm just going to do it for her. At least they can understand.
I'm Jackie again, and I'm trying to interpret Gabriela.
Because technically, like, the whole purpose of the extra time is for translating what they're saying, but not really speaking for them, you know? So are you going to be speaking for them or translate? Okay. All right, so put six minutes up there, please.
I want to talk about the Hispanic kids that are born here or been raised here. The kids that have been here are in the best position to help new kids that are arriving. So, but what ends up happening is that the students that receive that the new kids and help the new kids start making fun of the new kid or not speaking Spanish correctly or using their native language. Spanish is not the main language of kids who have been raised here.
Jackie, I think you got confused as to what she was trying to say. She was trying to say that the kids that have been brought here or Hispanic background, that the new kids that are newcomers may find that...
Are you a reporter?
No, no, I'm official.
Okay, sorry, I asked you to say...
Making sure that this is clear to everyone. So the new kids make fun of these kids that belong here or already that they were raised here or grown here. And these kids make fun of Hispanics poorly spoken, of these local kids who come from Hispanic background. That's what she told me, see what you said.
They're new. They're new. So the new kids then make fun of the kids that have been born and raised here. That's why I want to have my daughter involved in helping kids that are just coming because... These new kids have had problems and it turns into bullying. Because of the Spanish that my daughter speaks. So this is what I'm seeing and I don't want there to be more bullying. So it's independent what the school teaches to the children. Separate from what they want to be asked to.
May I add something to that? So basically, Gabriela was just saying is, if this is the payback that these kids are going to get, this kind of bullying, then that's not fair. Then they should maybe be involved in trying to help these new kids, maybe by way of the teachers, telling them or asking them kindly to do this because in the end, this is the payback they get. And her daughter in particular, being experienced a good thing going down that road. So that's what Gabriela's saying.
Have you seen that?
So many things have happened even between Hispanic kids. There's a lot of examples like we are giving now. And most of them have been kind to Antonio. But they haven't seen, they told me that they also...
They have told me that it's communicated from to you guys.
So you guys are aware of those issues through Antonio.
That's what I think.
If anyone has any questions, follow me up here for those answers.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to address the board?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jacqueline Zambrano.
Please, you're allowed to use...
Oh, right now?
Right now. Jackie, you go?
Yes. So hello again. My name is Jacqueline Zambrano and I am a parent of the Richland School District. And recently, I became aware of three school threats that happened in the Richland School District that occurred within one week of each other. And that was alarming to me. And so, that prompted me to form a group of parents with similar concerns, as well as other concerns such as bullying and racial discrimination. Since the time of being able to speak today is limited, I will not be able to cover all of the topics of concern or interest. But I would like to cover a couple at least, which would be the prevention of school violence, as well as racial discrimination in the Richland schools. So with a total of six school threats throughout this academic school year, and with three of them being so close to one another, I believe, as well as do others, that Richland School District is not doing enough to prevent these type of threats from happening and potentially in the future, not being enough to prevent violence, school violence. I believe that the see something, say something model is not enough. And the current consequences are also not enough. Or perhaps they are being... They're being applied, but not equally between different cases of students. And we also believe that students should be directly told specifically of what consequences would be to school violence. I know that students are told that there's a zero policy for violence, but they're not told what the consequences are. And myself and some of the group members believe that that's an important piece, that kids know specifically what their consequences would be and to not assume that they would automatically guess what the consequence would be. And something else that I want to bring up is, when I think a lot about this problem of school violence, not necessarily this school, I mean this school and all schools, throughout the state, throughout the nation. And I think it's really important, as well as some of the parents here, that students are identified when they're starting to have problems, behavior problems, or signs of emotional distress, different things that they may be struggling, that these children are identified and they get the help that they need. And hopefully, before it would even get to the point of going to a threat or to act on a threat. So lastly, I would talk, I'd like to talk about racial discrimination. This is a topic of particular interest to me because I myself experienced a lot of racial discrimination growing up here as a kid. And it was rough, it was difficult experience, painful, and I wouldn't wish it upon any child. Unfortunately, my own son, he did experience racial discrimination on the Richland school buses. This was like a few years ago. And he was on the bus and there was another kid there, a lot of kids. And one of the other students there on the bus called him a racial slur. And so, there's a fight that kind of ensued from there. So, but I also know that's not the only case. And I've heard from a lot of different parents that have had similar issues on the buses, specifically with racial discrimination and sometimes discrimination that leads to bullying. But...
So, thank you, your time has passed.
Is that really?
Those deeps was the timer?
Mr. President, since my name was mentioned, can I say just one thing real quick?
No. All right. Alma Delacruz? Do you require a translator?
No, I'm going to. So I'm Alma. I have kids that go here. All three of my kids go here now. The thing I'm worried about is the bullying. As I have nieces that go to school too, they've gone through it. My oldest one has gone through it ever since she was in the elementary school. And she's changed a lot. It's hard because she was, like, she was really loving everything and now it's like, like an I don't care person because of everything she's gone through. I feel like the school is not doing enough with the whole bullying and stuff. My child's not, she's not a saint, she's not the greatest. Everyone makes mistakes and stuff. But I kind of feel like if... I think it's the, maybe the fact that she's, that she has a Hispanic background, that they take it more against the Hispanic background kids than like the white kids. I feel like they get treated different than the white kids. Now, the other thing too is our Hispanic community is growing here. There's kids that come here that don't speak English. And the kids that are in school that speak Spanish are trying to help these kids. Now, my child came home to me saying there's teachers that are telling her to not speak Spanish or to stop talking bad about someone, somebody else. Why do they just assume that that child's talking bad about somebody else when they're trying to help these kids that don't speak the language? I get mad when she comes home and tells me that, oh, this teacher told me to not speak Spanish, when I'm trying to help somebody else that doesn't speak the language, that doesn't speak English. I've sent out emails, have not gotten a response. And I'm not sure if this is just going to maybe push other parents to enroll their kids in different schools because... because I, I thought about it, but I haven't done anything because my work and everything is here. But I just want to see if there's something that you guys can work with that, unless there's teachers that are bothered by kids speaking Spanish, if they're willing to learn the language so they can help these other kids. If they don't like kids that speak both languages to speak Spanish at school and help these new kids, I just want to know if they're willing to learn that other language so that other kids don't feel like they're being attacked or they feel bad because of helping other kids that are new in the school district. I don't have anything against my daughter helping anybody that doesn't speak English, but I'm also not gonna tell her, or I'm gonna tell her to not help if she's gonna be treated like that.
Thank you. All right, this will be our last speaker, Darlan Hernandez. Do you require a translator?
No. I wanted to talk about the mocking and racism of cultures that is happening in my school. I, I've talked with my friends who've come from Latino America, straight from there. I talk to them in Spanish because it is their main language, and it's the language we share between each other. But the problem is, is that there are many kids who don't know Spanish that will mock how we speak. And this isn't once or twice, this has happened multiple times, and that is not all. Before last year, I helped this girl, my friend, with translating because she didn't know English, so I helped her. And a kid told me that if I didn't stop speaking Spanish, that he would bring a gun to school and shoot me and my friend. I told the teacher, and I don't know what happened next. But I, and I don't know if he got right, the correct punishment, or if he just got told, "Don't say that," and then they left him. But this has just bugged me for so long that no one really does anything about this like mocking of my culture, of my people. It just makes me mad.
Thank you. District administrators report.
Okay, so just a couple of announcements. We did have our Class of 2023 graduation ceremony held yesterday. It went fantastic, everything went really, really smoothly. And kudos to all the people who helped put that together. Today was our last day with students, for the rest of our student body. And then teachers will have in-service on Tuesday and Wednesday, and then teachers will be done for the summer, as of Wednesday. So another reminder that our summer food service program will be starting on Monday, June 12th, that's a week from today, on Wednesday, Monday, the 12th. Food will be available for pickup at Richmond Center High School, as well as during the month of June, the Community Center and Brewer Public Library. Okay, so interested families should sign up for meals by contacting our food service department, and they can pick those up at one of those locations. That will need to change when we get into July, and we've got elementary summer school going where we will have congregant settings here at the, at the high school during that time. But for June, we're going to try to help our families out by having a couple of alternative pickup sites at the Community Center and Brewer Public Library, as well as up here at the high school. And again, just contact our food service department if interested. Also, next Monday, the 12th, there will be a foundation meeting at 5:30. And then there will be our last board meeting for 2022-2023 the following Monday on June 19th. And then finally, just a friendly reminder that starting in July, board meetings will start to be held on the second and fourth Mondays of the month, starting with July 10th, 2023, at 7:00. And then we'll hold second and fourth from there on out unless a special notice is posted. Any questions?
Board member reports.
Curriculum met on June 1st. We reviewed the AGR year-end report, and then that will be presented on our next June meeting. We also reviewed student fees and student handbooks, which we'll be talking about later this evening. And then the goals and priorities for the 23-24 school year. We reviewed that information. We're thinking about the curriculum committee, the proposal. That will come on June 19th, but the intent will be that the board will vote on it in July, so you have some time to digest that.
The Personnel Committee met on May 18th, discussed the general calendar for the 23-24 school year. We also had a presentation that will be shared later this evening with a curriculum proposal from Mr. Troxel. And then we also discussed the employee handbook and getting the revisions taken care of for that. For the Policy Committee, we met on June 1st, and further reviewed one of the policies that will be part of the July 1st date for those policies to take effect.
Buildings, Property, and Transportation met on Thursday, the 18th. We covered many topics, starting with reorganizing the committee. We approved the meeting schedule for 23-24 school year and first and third Thursdays, as we are currently. We got an update on the scoreboard installation, which is gonna take a bit more time than expected as there's, they're massive, 26 feet and 23 feet for the baseball and softball, and they have to withstand 90 mile an hour winds. So we have a bit more construction to do on that, but more work to come. We scheduled sidewalks for the month of June to go through Jefferson Elementary, and then August for the high school. We got an update on timelines and the specifications needed for the CCLC vans or suburban type. The CCLC is also known as Sting, and it's our after-school in Richmond. That's on tonight's agenda later. We recommended working with Nexus on building renovation needs and getting assessments on that info. Also had updates on East Falls acquisition, and again, on tonight's, the potential sale of Jefferson Elementary.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Is there a motion to approve prior meeting minutes from April 24, 2023?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
So Mr. Dowdna made the motion, Mr. Bealing second. Any discussion? Mr. Bealing?
Aye.
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 Aye. Approval of prior special meeting minutes of May 1, 2023. Is there a motion? Someone? Mr. Bealing made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Dickman. Any discussion? Mr. Troxel?
Aye.
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 Aye. Is there a motion to approve prior meeting minutes of May 15, 2023?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Ms. Troxel. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? Mr. Dowdna?
Aye.
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 Approval of statement of cash.
I move we approve the statement of cash dated June 1, 2023.
Question made by Mr. Dowdna. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Wertz. Discussion? Mr. Board, anything to add?
We did transfer $800,000 from our government investment tool, Community First Bank, to cover general operating expenses and payroll.
Mr. Huntmer?
Aye.
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 Approval of invoices?
I move we approve Community First Bank General Check and Account Checks number 85332 through number 85407, and ECH number 222301450 through number 222301540 for a net total of $782,218.47. This is for the purpose of general operating costs of the board.
Motion made by Mr. Dowdna. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Wertz. Mr. Board, anything to add?
I would point out, about three quarters of the way down on page nine in the PDF attachment, you'll see a, two payments actually, to ACP Creative Internet Server for server upgrades totaling $3,186.99. As most of you know or heard, we had some severe internet outage about 10 days ago, drastically affected, you know, impacted learning, specifically up here at the high school, but in all of our buildings. Primary, I believe, had internet for a little extra time than the rest of the buildings did. But anyway, this was our repair cost to get that upgraded. We had to have a part flown in from Ohio next day in order for our IT folks to, to get it all fixed. So this $3,200 was that expense.
Steve, I noticed that the scoreboards, I think, was made in dispatch. Was that, I'm just curious, is the timing of that coming out versus when you're ordered?
Well, they would have been delivered not that long ago, and then we would have paid for it. And those were, donations were made and held in our Fund 21, and then the bills would have been filed.
Thank you.
But as Mr. Huntmer alluded to earlier, we do still have the installation and the engineering to put those up.
Any other questions? Discussion? Mrs. Dickman?
Aye.
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 Mrs. Coleman, consent agenda items?
Adopt the 2023 general record scheduled as presented. Approve the June 30th, 2023 committed fund balance designation to include a total of $60,000 for future HRA applications per board policy number 704. In accordance with the provisions of the Wisconsin statute 65.905A, please approve the above-budget adjustments for the 2022-23 fiscal year. This shall require at least a two-thirds majority vote. Approve the timeline and specifications for the CCLC vehicles as presented. And the last one is approve the check and connect program as presented.
Is there a motion to approve consent agenda items?
I'll make the motion.
Questioned by Mrs. Wertz, seconded by Mr. Troxel. Discussion? Mrs. Wertz?
Aye.
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 Is there a motion to approve the modified agenda? Motion by Mrs. Dickman. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Huntmer. Discussion? Aye.
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 District transfers and vacancies?
So in the three attachments that you've got there, the first one is the certified staff. We have an alternative education teacher posting just ended here on June 2nd. So we'll be looking to do interviews for that and get that alternative education teacher for our charter school up and going. We also have some postings for part-time art teacher, grade six at the intermediate school, as well as a speech-language person at the primary school. All of those are posted in Tell Field. Second attachment is our support staff. We've got a couple of administrative assistants at Richmond Center High School that are open right now. And then we've got a pending board approval for a bookkeeper in the non-union staff. Just continue to pluck away at the openings and vacancies as they occur throughout the summer.
Any questions for Mr. Board? All right, on to action items. Curriculum presentation.
So a few months ago, I had, Mr. Troxel? Just keep talking until he gets in here. A few months ago, I had spoke with Mr. Troxel about some of the work that he had done when he was an instructional coach in the state of Iowa, and what we might be able to do to bring some of those things to our own school district to help benefit our students and teachers in the way of curriculum. And I spoke with Dr. Johnson. Mr. Troxel put together a proposal that he presented to myself, as well as Dr. Johnson and high school administration. We really enjoyed and liked what Mr. Troxel was proposing as far as the way it would work and look. So we had him take that to the Curriculum Assessments and Public Relationship Committee meeting in early May, and then again to the Personnel Negotiations and Budget Development Committee in mid-May. Both of those committees are making the recommendation to approve this proposal. But I know not all board members have gotten a chance to see it. So I wanted Mr. Troxel to come tonight and present it to the full board and as well as our public and for the administration on what this proposal looks like and what it could do for us in the way of moving the needle in curriculum. So with that, Mr. Troxel, stage is yours.
There's a desk.
Well, he's pulling that up. I would say that I did. Anybody who's following at home or is in the audience, the proposal, the presentation that he is going to be presenting, it has been updated. That slide deck is attached as a PDF in the board decks as well.
All right, you got that desk. Awesome. All right, ladies and gentlemen of the board and Mr. Team, thank you guys for having me again. I want to kind of go over something that is near and dear to my heart. I feel very passionate about this. And so what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna kind of go through the background and history of just standards, right? But then also through the process that I had a chance to go through in Iowa, with the hope that we can do that here. I know there are not a lot of schools doing this work. So it would be fun to kind of lead the charge and be a school of envy, as Mr. Board talks about constantly. So with that, if you guys have questions along the way, interrupt me at any time. Is that okay? Is that kosher? Okay. All right. Okay, so heaps of background here. The whole movement with standards really kind of started, I think, in the 80s with Reagan, Reagan kind of picked up steam. But the standards that we know of today really found traction early 2010s. And so your initial standards really kind of hit the ground around the time. And in the state of Wisconsin, they have been revised or updated recently. So if you take a look here, science, these are the NGSS. And I'm gonna go ahead and show you the anatomy of the standard here in just a minute. But these are as of 2017. Our social studies standards, there's a big paradigm shift that's happening currently with that. It's moving away from what you know versus what you know. It's moving away from what you know versus what can you do. And so there's a lot of do components as well as kind of inquiry standards with claims and evidence. So that's been a big shift. E L A has recently been revised as of twenty-twenty and most recently mathematics withdrew a provision in twenty-twenty-one. So this isn't something we are behind on at all, you know? Just kind of unpacking these things, what you do with these, that's kind of the challenge for not only our district, but a lot of other districts across the state of Wisconsin. So with that, I want to kind of show you the anatomy of what these standards look like. Because you would wish they were standardized. Unfortunately, they're anything but standardized. So here's a random science standard. And so you can see when you take a look at this with the N G S S, there are three things that are put in with this. You've got science and engineering practices, cross-cutting concepts, and then they smash a bunch of different core ideas together. And so kind of breaking these things apart can be really problematic. There's a lot that goes on to that. But if you take a look at my area of expertise with social studies, broken down into kind of the major social sciences, and like I said earlier, you do also have kind of the inquiry standards that deal with claim and evidence, right? And making sure that you vet sources and all that stuff really to equip kids to work well in the twenty-first century. But within this, you can see kind of the strands of how these things kind of build from kindergarten all the way to the high school level, all right? But the challenge becomes how do you unpack that language? Like, what does that mean for a kid looking at this? You know, and then what does that kind of look like as we align that to assessments and so on and so forth? Okay? And then if you get to the latter, here's the E L A. So you can see your nine-ten strand and your eleven-twelve, anything in pink there, it is identical language. However, the indicators below that are completely different. You know, so which one do you use? What does the recognition look like? I mean, there's a lot of challenges when you go to integrating these standards into the actual classroom yourselves. And then lastly, probably arguably the easiest one is math. You know, and math has a lot of resources with this, just the importance of mathematics and reading just as a state and as a nation. A lot of this is going to be linear, just built upon itself, where some of those other ones are very subjective in nature. So you can see, unpacking these things, it takes, it's a lot of challenge, right? To make sure that that makes sense and we kind of implement that into our stuff, our new classrooms and our assessments, and then ultimately kind of figure out how will we know if kids know it? So give you a little bit of background here, okay? I got my master's in curriculum and instructional technology from Iowa State in twenty fifteen. I've got a few less gray hairs than that beard, still no hair. And then what was really cool about this time is in the state of Iowa, they implemented what we call the T L S system, Teacher Leadership System. And that was championed by Director of Education Ryan Wise. Iowa was one of the first in the nation to implement something on a state level with instructional coaches. So every district had the freedom to kind of build a system that best fit their community and their kids and their staff and so on and so forth. And so my background was a technology creator. And what that allowed me to do is really kind of work with a lot of other disciplines. So yeah, I worked with social studies, but destruction, I worked with science, I worked with family and consumer education, right? And one of the things that was really interesting going into that is my first question would be, okay, what learning targets, like what are we trying to accomplish with technology? There were a lot of teachers that didn't know and weren't sure how to do it. Keep my kids entertained, like let's do something fun. Okay, that's cool. What's the learning component, all right? Otherwise, we're just going to waste your time. And so a lot of conversations sort of with that. And so we kind of needed to back up just a little bit and figure out where we as a district with our curriculum efforts. Now, one of the other things I got a chance to do during this timeframe is I was on the state social studies team for standards integration implementation. And so that was interesting to kind of work with, you know, different social studies instructors across the state of Iowa and field test these things. Because we get the language, we get very little, if none, of the support materials to make these things happen in the classroom. So with that in mind, we went back to our district. What I'm going to show you are things that we actually showed to our school board when this stuff really started to take off. So the big question that we centered everything around here was this. You know, do we have a solid tier-one curriculum? Eighty percent of kids need to have this experience. It's set in stone, it's a guaranteed, it's a viable curriculum. Make sure that all kids are ready for whatever is after high school. And? No, we weren't even close. In fact, when you take a look at our reality in twenty sixteen, our curriculum was all in place. I mean, you had people using teachers' spare teachers, you had people developing their own. Some of it was textbook-based, it was just all of it. Okay? There were huge learning gaps between classes, the transitional years between middle school and high school. Those were always tough, you know, for kids to kind of expect to have a solid or seamless transition. It just wasn't present. There were a lot of people had no idea what standards they were using. Especially our C T E folks, our career and technical education, had no idea where to get them, you know? And so where do I start with this work? You know, a lot of the work that we were doing was activity-based. Kids were busy, all right, but were they truly learning? You know, and overall, the answer was pretty no. We weren't working in teams, there was very little collaboration, that is horizontal with the departments, but that's also in vertical sense as well, you know, from nine-ten to six-seven, I mean, you name it. We just did not have that, okay? And we had very little discussion on that. That was a reality, you know? And it was, it led to a lot of frustrations, it led to a lot of initiatives that really didn't go anywhere. And so we had to do something about it. And so one of the things that our organization did is we were able to build a system to kind of address some of these issues. And so what you're seeing here are screenshots of a system that I, along with members of our T L S program, teacher leaders, built. So you have the main website, and then from there, you can take a look at any one of our core areas, our elective areas in any given discipline at any given level. This was a guaranteed viable curriculum, it was completely transparent. Your kid goes through our system, you're going to see exactly what they're learning and the level of their learning skills. And so this was great to kind of have those conversations with stakeholders. You know, this is what education is looking like in our classroom. We weren't hiding anything, there weren't curveballs or throwing. This was our guarantee and our promise to the people that were sending their kids to us. This is what it's going to look like in our classroom. So that was also cool then because now, as a teacher, I get to see exactly what they had before, you know, announce more conversations about kind of what happens next. And I'm comparing my kids for that next level. So along with this, we had completely changed the way that we think, all right? And with all these different initiatives and plans and solutions, what we did is we really kind of embraced the P L C model. And there were four questions that guided absolutely everything that we did. The first one was, what do we want our students to know and be able to do? So we look at these standards, we look at these things that are given to us by the state, all right?
Can I pause you for one second?
Yeah.
The talking in the back is like really distracting. Thank you. Go ahead.
All right. So we've looked forward to these standards. Now you're going to see different disciplines have a lot of different standards. Mine are fairly straightforward, I think there's like forty or fifty or so. E L A, oh my gosh, I feel sorry for those folks. There are so many, and there's not really a good way to cover everything and cover it well. You can discuss it when you're moving on really quickly, but to teach it to mastery, you know, it's going to take some time. So you have to make that decision, what are my, you're going to hear in the chat, power standards, essential standards, priority standards. All right, and when they take my class, I'm going to guarantee this is what my kids are going to learn. And so it involves some decision-making on my part. Second question is, how do we know they're learning? And so once we identify the standards and those learning targets, now what does my assessment look like? You know, and if we teach different areas, you know, what do those common assessments then look like? So every kid, regardless of instructor, has the same academic experience. And the third question is, now we need to do modifications, all right? They don't learn it, what do we do? What does that look like? You know, some of our tier-two or tier-three interventions with our curriculum. And then lastly, what happens if they get it? And what's next? How do we keep these kids engaged? How do we challenge them to go to the next level? So these four questions really provided a ton of clarity for all the work that we did. And honestly, if it didn't relate to one of these four questions, we just didn't do it. And it just cleaned up a lot of the muddiness of some of the initiatives that we're grabbing for to kind of find some kind of viable solution. Let me just pause it for a minute, are there any questions? So fast forward now, left the state of Iowa, came back to the state of Wisconsin. This past year, we have had a P L C group at a high school. And Mr. Bowlesworth could probably talk to how that started a little bit more than I can. But all I can tell you is that our primary focus was around grading and curriculum and what does that look like here at middle school and high school level. And for the most part, we have had consistent representation across the board. You know, so every department was there, a lot of C T E representation was there. And so it was really cool to kind of see the vibe. You have people in this building that are excited and they want to do the work, you know? So sometimes it's not really that case. So the next step then for this was to kind of put all of our stuff in one location. And so this is just a screenshot in the committee that kind of shows you the working model of what this looked like. This is our version. And certainly, hopefully, as we go forward with this work, it'll be open, it'll be transparent to anybody that has any vested interest in what is taught within the middle school and the high school at this moment. So it's simple, it's just a drop-down menu, it'll take you to the class. And then what it'll do from there is it'll take you to something that looks like this. Now, this is a current screenshot of Mr. Coleman's Nutrition is Strength class. And so you're going to see, the template is going to be the same, but the standards that they use are going to be very different. And so what we have identified is essentially these things. So we have our priority standards, all right? Everything that I do with this unit is going to build upon that. And so if I gave this to a kid, designed a nutrition plan to maintain an appropriate energy balance for a healthy, active lifestyle, they might get it, right? That one's a little more clear cut. But what I need to do is I need to break that down, all right? So there's no second guessing about who I'm looking for. And so what Mr. Coleman has done thus far is he has other things to kind of support that process. And then he goes back down even further, all right? So what are the big picture, what's the thirty-thousand-foot view things that they need to know? But ultimately, when I got a kid that goes through that, this is it. If that's what I'm looking for, do they know it? Yes, no, and at what level? And so what's cool about that is that this is now his opportunity to create a system, create a class that works for him. And we've got about seven or eight different teachers that are doing this at different speeds, bases and levels. So the units are going to adjust. Right now, I think there are nine to twelve different units you can populate. Some teachers use twelve, some people use three, you know? It just kind of depends on what they're needed. So I know, we're not telling people you have to fit into this mold, right? This makes it easier for all of us to get to the same page, but you make this work best for you. So that's one example. Here is another example of what this looks like. So this is a world history unit. And what I want to show you here is kind of how we go from using those priority standards and using that active bridge, all right? So you can see within my standards here, evaluate, evaluate, analyze, evaluate, justify, right? These are higher-order thinking skills. I'm going to tell you, to find this stuff online is darn near impossible. So a lot of the time, a lot of the work, all right, to do this, we have to create it, we have to collaborate in order to make it work well. And so just like Mr. Coleman's work, you have your priority standards, you have supporting, we do also want to have a bigger push for employability skills, you know, for those students that, that are not going to live in world history for the rest of their lives, right? I mean, what does that kind of look like for these soft skills when we go to other schools of a workplace or military, whatever that may look like, all right? But just like the other class, we break this down into these big-picture ideas, all right? But ultimately then, that's what I'm looking for. Six things. And these six things guide assessments, they are going to be in cybers in some capacity, and there's no hiding. That's what I want. And at what level can you do it? So that's the cool thing about this, we go from analyzing primary, secondary resources and then predicting potential outcomes based on the past into actually looking at the fall of the Roman Empire in this case, and then also then applying that to what is the current state of the United States, we kind of go into the twenty-first century. And so it allows kids to create things at a high level where a worksheet, a crossword puzzle or something like that in the past is going to look. So it's been really cool to see kids flourish and be creative and make claims and back these things up with a lot of this work. So with this work, it takes time, it's very intensive to kind of unpack that stuff. Even as I figure out what evaluate means for me, you know, my colleague might look at that as something really different. And so that collaboration and that conversation becomes very critical, so we're all on the same page. And part of that too is using screen work to make sure our kids are first one center, like this is what evaluation means here, this is what analysis means in my ring or et cetera. And so what will eventually we do with this is perhaps something like this that is open and again transparent, this is the work that we've done. These are the classes that we fully started on, and these are the areas that we just have not touched. So anybody and everybody can see what our progress looks like. And then this allows us then as departments to have that horizontal as well as that vertical articulation conversation, well, what does the progression look like for a kid? Okay. Any questions? Otherwise, I'm going to kind of go into the five big goals of the program and talk about kind of the general structure of the teacher leadership program that I'm proposing to you this evening.
Mr. Traxel?
Like, I know this is being developed so that the students know what the standards are, what the expectations of the classes are. In building this, what are the standards for the teachers and the staff that's building these standards to make it so that it's pretty unilateral, so that it's consistent? If we have three E L A teachers that they're all on the same page, creating the same type of curriculum?
Just a question for clarification, you taught people kind of how they work together? Or is it the mechanism itself to do the work?
It's how do, how do we ensure that all the teachers in one subject matter are all on the same page?
They're going to use the same document. And so they're all kind of working together to figure out what that is. And you know, that's kind of what we did in Iowa. And we had some really good conversations, and there were some knock-down, drag-and-out, really tough conversations, people were very passionate about what they were holding on to. You know, but ultimately, that kind of comes into before, it's like having these norms. You know, it's share agreement, like this is what we're going to build, you know? And you've got to have consensus. And so within this work, you've got to figure out as a group or a team, how best that's going to work for you. If you can soon collaborate, it's really difficult. Does that answer your question?
Absolutely.
Okay. But yeah, the goal is that whatever we put out there, we all put our stamp of approval. We're proud of this, we're good with this. And then with new staff that's coming in, this is the way that we do business here. It's not to say that it's written in stone. That's where a lot of this is being ruled out. We can change it, we can modify it, you know, as consensus declares what we need to. Yes, ma'am?
And I apologize upfront because I was not in the committee meeting, so there are possibly more committee-level questions, but I wasn't there. So just quickly, P L C is your return to a professional learning community?
Yes, thank you. Okay.
Also, when you mentioned priority standards, is that going to be the same number of standards for each subject? Will that be variable? I know you mentioned like E L A has a lot of standards, so are they going to have more of these like priority standards than the other subjects or?
That is a good question. The gurus will tell you eight to ten for any class.
Sure.
You know, just to make sure that we can hit that more than once, you know? And so for me, that's easier, right? Because I've got less to choose from. For E L A, it's going to be really tough.
But it's not like there's a five for everyone, five for social, five for social, it's going to be variable.
It, yes, yep. But that eight to ten is kind of that sweet spot that we usually suggest.
Okay, super. Last question. And then when you mentioned employability skills and I saw that up there in the social studies, is that going to be throughout all subjects or just specific to social studies?
No, all subjects.
Okay, so they're going to hit employability skills in math, employability skills in, okay?
Absolutely. Yep.
Thank you.
And I think with that one, that's the tricky one where we're going to have to figure out what, what skills we're pulling from in different areas, because that involves a broader, wider conversation. You know, so we can take a look at, are we being redundant? Is there anything that we're missing along the way? So I think that's part of that process. I don't know if it's step one, but it might be step twenty-one, you know? That I don't know yet. Good question. So the goals, there are five that are going to kind of guide this whole thing. Number one is that we're creating a curriculum that's aligned with national standards. And some of these are national, the ones that we saw are state, right? But a lot of those are based off of national, national standards and all of those, that work that's been done. And with this, we unpack this like I showed you just a little bit ago with kind of the student-friendly learning targets. So we're not putting these standards written for people that live in the world of education in front of a, you know, fourteen-year-old kid that has to figure out what we want from them. We just make it black and white and very clear. And then we make this public, you know? At any given time, anybody can pull it up. And it's not going to be done, and that's something that's going to be a little bit of a shift, you know, for teachers, like to put it up. And that's something that's going to be a little bit of a shift, you know, for teachers, like to put our best foot forward. But people are going to see the process and where we're at with this. And this stuff is going to take years, you know? And as standards change, as initiatives change, this thing kind of lives and breathes and changes as it needs to as well. So that's my, our first goal. Second goal is that now we have these learning targets, those are the things that we use to develop those assessments. To make sure really kind of we have the, the level, the cognitive level that the standard is asking for. We're not presenting something that's too low, alright, we're not going too far above. It's just kind of a goalie log zone for what, or how we're assessing kids. My recommendation is to use Google Classroom with this. Just because it's nice with that, it's that we can have one class and have all people in that. And they can see a lot of this work that's being done. In addition, in classroom, you have more of the ability to have cyclical instruction or with these standards. Like I said, you don't want to teach it once and be done. You can start to layer these things to make sure we're coming back. You know, I think the natural progression with this work is eventually get to standards based grading. And I think with that, you have to take a look at how many times, what's the progress with each standard within each class? And that's one of the reasons why you have fewer standards than covering 30 or 40. And then with that as well, then that allows our, our special education staff to really take a look at what's happening here. So they're not scrambling to find additional resources or make their own classes. They're using the tier one curriculum and they're modifying that. We're using their expertise to fit, you know, their, their students in whatever way is most appropriate for them. Number three, the goal is to increase the overall percentage of proficiency in math, science, reading and social studies. And so my recommendation with this work, it's going to be years to do this because it takes time, we want to do it right. But my recommendation would be to start with really those transitional years, seventh grade and ninth grade as well. And I think that allows for more of that, that vertical conversation of what this looks like. This also allows us to take a look at different cohorts that are kind of moving through our system. And I'm going to show you some data from my previous district here in just a little bit. And you can see why that, that cohort data is going to be really, really important as we kind of look at this going forward. To really assess its effectiveness if it's working. The fourth thing that's on here is that these teacher leaders, they are still going to teach. I was a full release instructional coach and I didn't like it at all. It's one of the reasons I'm back in, in RC. But with this, you're still doing the work, you're on the front lines, you're in the trenches, if you will. But you also are pulled up from one class to allow yourself to work with other teachers. That could be new staff, that could be, you know, staff that's kind of been doing this for some time. And it's not just the curriculum stuff, it could be kind of what's your delivery? What's your classroom management, right? What's the equity conversation that's happening with all of our students? Would that be, you know, by, by gender or some other demographic factor? Okay, well, the goal is that people love it, like we invest in them, we hold on to them. So we're not repeating this training year after year after year. Okay, and then lastly is that we become part of the professional development conversation to make sure that, okay, our math team is, is looking at algebraic expressions. They need PD about that, right? The data is saying that our kids are struggling there, let's give them that, let's walk through that. Or, you know, the conversation might involve something along, how do we develop claims and evidence? We need specialized professional development. And so now that we have our finger on the pulse of what's going on within the departments, now we can kind of help to guide what that may look like. Of course, this is all in conjunction with the overall vision for where the district wants to go with the curricular sense. And again, you're going to see those four questions again, those guide everything. If it doesn't relate to that, just, our recommendation is it just doesn't become part of this system. Okay, any questions? Otherwise, I'm going to go through kind of the general structure of what this program would look like. Am I doing okay on time? I think, maybe? The hook isn't up there. Okay, alright, so with this, you would have the director of curriculum. That, that person, Dr. Johnson, would call the shots. You know, this is what we're looking for, this is the needs of the district. She is very privy to a lot of that data and that information. And then from there, there's your small army, okay? You'd have teacher leader coordinator, they would have 15 additional days. And then they'd have two hours every week. That could be in individual coaching, that could be in group meetings, whatever that looks like. And that would be recorded, you know, so everybody knows this is how that time is being spent. And then the stipend there is 7,500. You break that down with the number of hours, $39 an hour, 26 after about, you know, 30% taxes are taken out. And then from there then you would have an ELA coach, English and Language Arts, Math, Science, Social Studies. And you would also have a CTE representative as well. Those stipends are a little bit lower. They have 10 outside days and then they have an additional hour a week. So when that breakdown happens, we're looking at about $43 an hour, $30 in real after taxes. So there is no, with this system, no double dipping. Now, I say that because a lot of the work, I'm going to ask this proposal, this system, there is one 25 or one class they would not teach. Instead of teaching in class, they would be co-teaching and they would mentor, they would work with one of their peers. And that would be within their department, at the high school level, within the department at the middle school level. And then each one of these would be married to some kind of elective course as well. So for example, English or ELA would, would probably marry well with foreign language, you know, in that capacity. You know, social studies would marry well with business. So we'd make sure we would have that conversation. So it wasn't just, this is a core initiative, you know, and the elective courses can just figure it out. We don't want that, okay? We want everybody to feel supported along the way. So the time that's spent within the building within the day, that becomes more of a structural decision. And so there's not any issue about, well, you're getting paid a salary and you're also getting paid stipend. These things would kind of happen outside of one another. Now, with that, this is what I would recommend with this program. This is that 25% release time. And with that flexible prep, what that means is if I get a prep still for my, my classes that I teach and I get a period out of the day where I can go ahead and I can do this work, I can substitute based on the needs of the day. So maybe I've got second period prep, alright? But during second period, you know, my, my business person needs to be there for some reason or whatever. I just flip flopped. That's all I'm talking about with that flexible prep. But it hasn't changed the responsibilities at all. Now, this is based on the, the current system that we have in place with the block scheduling. You know, and as that changes down, if that changes down the road, you know, these, these percentages may change to adjust whatever's appropriate for the needs of the building. Okay, now, teachers that engage in this work, for every successful and approved course that they complete, you saw kind of the templates that I showed you earlier, they would also receive a $200 stipend for that work. So if you've got a go getter that loves curriculum, they geek out about it, let's go, right? You go through the process, your instructional coaches, you know, the program director, the administrative team, they're all in support of that. Alright, let's go ahead and let's get it going. Now move on to the next one, so we can kind of streamline some of this work. And after that first one, it becomes a lot easier. What we saw initially with this work is it probably took about two months, three months or so, once you got into it. And after that, it went, went a lot quicker. So that would be a part of it with this. Now, what I want to do is I'm going to pivot, if there aren't any questions, and just kind of talk a little bit about what the district that I came from, what they have done and what they've experienced and show you some data. That was one of the things that I wasn't able to provide in committee meetings. I have since found that and I want to share that information to take a look at how it was effective there to give you kind of a realistic timeline of what effectiveness could look like here. Okay, but before I go there, any questions at this point? Yes, ma'am? I, I love questions. Which one?
You go ahead now.
Can you go back a slide to the structure of it? The tiered director of instruction and then?
That one or one?
Correct. Who would be the teacher leader coordinator is the first question?
These would be publicly posted, that's what I would recommend. And so you put it out there and you would let any interested parties apply for these. And then after that, it would probably be a selection process or an interview committee that would review anybody, any of the applicants.
It's not a great look, sir. I mean, you're not going to pull somebody from off the street to do that, but I mean, so you say publicly posted, do you mean?
Within, within house, yes, yep, yep, absolutely. I'm going to let?
Make any position that we have available open to our certified staff.
Yep.
What's CTE, I'm sorry?
Career and Technical Education.
Okay. I also, I don't know, okay, I'm gonna have, just with this flexible prep. So if you were teaching three classes and you had a prep, so you had a great papers and prepared for three classes and now you're down to two classes, but you still get that prep and another prep, that still feels like more prep to, for these teachers.
Yes.
I just want to make sure that, you know, everybody's getting the same.
Right, so, yeah. I would, I would, let's take my schedule for example.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, so first period, right now I've got world history, you know? And then second period, I would have social problems. And then third and fourth, one of those would be my prep period, the other one would be to do this work. As it stands right now.
Sure, but the previous slide, I thought, okay, so then maybe I'm just not understanding the previous slide. The one before that, where it talks about, oh, oh, I'm sorry, it's going to be. Your 10, so is that included in your external one hour a week? No, because that would actually be five hours, so it can actually more than that because your prep is a 90 minutes, correct?
So this slide and the one after this are kind of like two separate things. This is what happens outside of the building. And then the one, one after this, if I can go to that. Does that, does that make sense so far?
If I'm understanding what you're saying, it makes sense, but it just still feels like the people that are these coaches are still going to have 90 extra minutes.
They'll have 90 extra minutes.
Also, they're going to have a prep period for one less class. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yes, yeah, absolutely. From experience, that 90 minutes is going to go fast.
Oh, I'm sure.
You know, having that conversation, right, and doing that work. They're going to be mentoring, they're going to be co-teaching, they're going to be in these same classes. So are they teaching it directly when I want? No. But are they teaching it or helping build this curriculum stuff in some way?
Okay, I have no doubt, they will fill up that time, no doubt. With beneficial, um, appropriate instruction and preparation. It still feels like that is a good idea because they're getting a salary for that time. But this says that their stipend is coming from outside that time. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Oh, absolutely. And that's where I said it's just a structural change. If this is what, this work is important, you know, and that's the, the change, it'll be, you could run the system, you know, and still have a full load, you know?
And die.
What's that?
And die on every Friday night, you pass out for the entire weekend.
Yes, that is correct. So I mean, that just comes down to whatever the district or board wants to do with that stuff.
Okay, I, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't misunderstanding it. Thank you.
Okay. So let me kind of go back again, I, I told you this initiative or this work started in Iowa in about 2016 or so. This is now, we're looking at seven years removed in this district. So the first one up there is the high school principal. And so they talked a little bit about kind of what this movement has done within their building. And so they have, they call them, where are they at there? We got this fancy word for this stuff, collaboration, no, no, no. Guiding coalitions, there we go, guiding coalitions. And so with this, they have a lot of these coaches that work with department heads that also work with administrators to kind of tackle this work. And so they have seen that their test scores that I'll show you in a minute have changed dramatically after they've kind of developed this tier one curriculum. And as the needs of the district have changed, the roles of these coaches have changed as well. For example, if it's less about building curriculum, now it's more about unpacking the data and getting help and assistance wherever they need it. And the director of curriculum below notes that there's been a lot of, a lot of change that's happened in the district and instructional coaches have been absolutely instrumental in the work that they have done. So one thing she did note here is that, like I talked about, their role needs to change based on the needs of the district or the class. So let me show you the data of what this looks like. So what you're seeing here is two years of data, alright? 2021 and then below that with 2022. And how this works, the next three slides are going to kind of show something similar. So you've got the cohort data coming in, you can see what that looks like, alright? With their degree of percent or proficient and how that's going down as they go into the fall, the winter. And then also as they go into the spring, the overall trends. I know it may be a little bit tough to unpack that if there is by all means asking questions. But this is their map data, they have three testing windows with spring, with fall and with winter. And so they, they keep this and they record this data. And so what they're using this for, not only is to kind of look at the overall proficiency across the board in these core areas, but also figure out which core areas, which cohort, which grade level is in the most need. And so now they're repurposing kind of the efforts of their coaches, alright, at these levels. And so you can see what that map data looks like. And then this is the equivalent of their state test, how that's kind of changed again from the spring, alright, over a year. Now, when they got this data, talking with the high school principal, the curriculum director, they made some serious changes. Where they put their money and where they put their effort, their time and their focus. And so as we take a look at this past school year, this is the most current data that they had for me as of two weeks ago. And so overall, you can see growth with proficiency across the board. Yep, you have a little bit of decline there. However, from going from 55, a 55% proficient to 72, a drop like that isn't as great as what the other gains were previously. And then similarly with the state test from year to year, just the amount of growth and proficiency across the board in areas of math. Reading, you can see what that looks like again from 2021 to 2022 to 2022 to 2023. This one shows a lot more focus, I can tell you from the work that we've done. Reading was a big area of focus prior to my departure from that district. And so this is the one that probably had the best foundation to kind of build off of going forward. And then lastly, science. Now, again, this one's going to kind of walk and talk very similar and you can see what that looks like over here, alright? Now, one thing that's kind of unique about this is they only test sophomores. And so that's where this data is going to be a little bit incomplete. And so they have to compare apples to oranges, right? Different cohorts to one another. So that can be kind of deceiving. We don't see that same longitudinal data, if you will, from cohort, you know, from the same freshman classes that kind of go through the system. But this was something I wasn't able to share with committee. I know there's a lot to it, I'm happy to answer questions about that. But hopefully that kind of answers to those questions about how fast this, this program and this, this implementation can be and really kind of the impact that it can have in just a year as well. But to get this kind of impact, I think that first part is that tier one curriculum, you're building that, that core curriculum at the high school and the middle school level. Okay, and so looking at the logistics, this was another concern that we had at the high school that came up in committee. What do those average class sizes look like? So looking at just basic numbers, right, kind of looking at the average, this is what it looks like. Having coaches that are pulled out to work with their, their peers. We still have relatively low class numbers, ELA, math and science, social studies at this point, assuming. We, we have that flexible prep where teachers are working with one another within the class day. That's probably going to have the most disruption. But again, that can change based on whatever needs to with course requests and whatever. Obviously, we're not going to load up a class to 30 kids in a class, that's no good for anybody. So, you know, if that means that you don't get a flexible prep and then you just, there's no coaching in quarter one because we need you in the classroom, then, then that's the nature of the beast. That was a lot. So I hope that kind of encapsulated kind of the overall system. We kind of talked about the structure and some of the metrics that we'll use at this point. I assume I'm okay on time. Open up for any questions you guys have.
I have a question. We talked about this in committee, but can you kind of talk about what the validation process looks like as far as, you know, make sure that what the check-ins look like with these teachers and that the, the program is working, what it's supposed to do?
Yeah, absolutely. So typically what we do is we start this work and you have a core teacher, you know? And certainly other districts will have just instructional coaches that might not have a background in, you know, science or ELA or whatever that may look like. And so you're having those discipline specific conversations. And these coaches are essentially asking, why did you choose this standard? You know, walking through that process. It's not, you need to do this and do this and do this, like that's, that, you're missing the boat. But that's what the coaching cycle or, or process looks like. And so we have those conversations about why they built the way they did. Once that's done, they've got a general flow, now the conversation changes to, okay, I see that it says evaluation or analysis or pre- see that it says evaluation or analysis or creation or whatever, what does your assessment look like? All right? And then ultimately, you created it, now what does that look like? And so there's constant check-ins along the way. Um, and again, kind of going back to the importance of having that in-building time is that the teachers are burned into a lot of things, right? And so in the building is when you typically get them, you know, so that's when those conversations are happening. Now, once the coach has kind of gone through, um, part of their weekly time is to review the work that's been done. And so they'll go ahead and they'll say, okay, listen, I've got geometry or I've got construction this week, this is where we're at. All right? And so they'll review that stuff and then have recommendations in for the teacher. And again, that could be person to person and using Google Docs, and that could be as simple as leaving a comment on there and tagging it in there. Um, once that's done, then everything is done, you know, these coaches then will meet with the teacher leader, make sure that everybody's on the same page, and what we did in Fort Madison was very helpful, then we met with administration and say, here is your work, construction one class, and this is what they're teaching, the level of teaching, are you okay with it? Yes or no? Right, or yes and or no, but here's some questions that I have. And so once administration has a green light and they give them approval, now we go, unit one is done, we're good with it. And so there's different levels to make sure that all stakeholders approve this process. So it's thorough, it's going to take time, but rather than that and rush through and go, I'm done, where can I do a college?
Yeah.
You know, does that answer your question?
It does, thank you.
Okay. I have one question, can I ask you? Uh, the question will be doubted, did that answer, uh, concern that came up in committee?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. I'll make sure to pull on that.
Did you have more, Mr. Traxel? I don't want to jump on your wagon here.
Oh, I'm good.
All right. So the recommendation, um, from both the curriculum and personnel committee was to approve this general idea of this proposal to pilot at Richland Center High School and to do it for three years, using that, um, some of that unallocated Esser dollars that was left over. So we have about two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. Um, it was un earmarked, it was kind of assigned to quote-unquote personnel and budget development, um, to earmark a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of that to fund those positions and the teachers if, as they complete the, the different courses. And, um, to review that annually and at committee levels and even at the board level, make the necessary adjustments as we need to. Um, but if we're going to try to move the needle from a curriculum standpoint to try to invest into, uh, this for three years using those Esser dollars and take advantage of the energy their current stat has in trying to do this and the ownership that they would put into it. So that's the recommendation.
Any questions for Mr. Board? Are there any further questions for Mr. Traxel? Is there a motion to approve approximately a hundred and twenty-five thousand five hundred dollars from the unallocated Esser dollars to be used to pilot the coaching positions proposed in the curriculum presentation at RCHS for three years with any more reviews?
I will.
Mr. Hunter made the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Words, any discussion? Mr. Bailey?
Hi.
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 It's approval of two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four student fees.
Okay, so this is letter nine B on your agenda. Um, if you looked at this earlier, I did update, uh, in the memo, um, the actual fees, this is an excerpt right from the, the RCHS student handbooks. You, you will look at approving the handbooks here in a little bit, but here are the student fees, uh, as it sits for RCHS students. Um, you'll see the, the changes are in strike-through font with the proposed changes in, um, the blue reflex color. Changes to the activity pass, that was a SWC conference change in, in admission cost, and then a, uh, getting rid of the assignment book cost and changing the APD geography cost. Uh, that's a workbook, um, and that cost went out therefore the student fee went out. I believe those are the, the changes, um, associated with student fees. Questions in any of those? This also came from the curriculum assessment public relations committee.
Is there a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four student fees as presented?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mrs. Words, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Dowdnaugh, any discussion? Mr. Traxel?
Aye.
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 Nine C, approval of two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four student handbooks.
So these went to the curriculum committee, um, last Thursday. Uh, any changes that needed to be made, policies updated with our new policies effective July one, those types of things, uh, reflected in the PDFs. There are five PDFs, two of them are policy, um, our current policy two eighty-two, and then our new policy twelve thirty point oh-two. Both of those, uh, basically state the same language, and they do state that, um, handbooks are the same as policy, that's why they get approved at the board level, and so anything in the handbook has the same holding power for that, um, that school year. So that's what those two policies are, and then the, the handbooks, uh, are, have been attached accordingly. I'll have, um, maybe each admin just briefly run through the changes that are made without going into a lot of depth that's been at the committee level. Um, certainly you can ask questions if you need, but just to go through the proposed changes. Um, and then the last thing I would add is that with all of these, uh, food service prices for twenty-three, twenty-four will come to the board, uh, on the June nineteenth meeting, and that will be the last piece that we need to get, uh, added into the handbook. So all of the handbooks will need that revision made after the food service prices for twenty-three, twenty-four are approved on the nineteenth. With that, uh, Amy, do you want to just run through your changes? I don't know, you don't have a lot, but are you prepared to do that?
Sure, yes. Um, so as Mr. Board said, the food service fees will be changed and updated. Um, we had taken a look at our four case food supplies kit, we have kept that at fifteen dollars. Um, the other big changes that are in here is updating policy. We also need, um, decrease the size of the handbook in referencing with links. Where before we would have some of the entire policy here, so we do have some links there. Um, the other change that we do have on here is, um, on the handbook's page twenty-three, under dangerous weapons, I did clarify, um, no one may use gestures as acts of violence or imitation of weapons, any article as a weapon to threaten or to injure another person. Because this year we did have a number of students using different gesturing, um, to either be a weapon or a gun, or to be a knife across someone's throat kind of gesture. And so I did want that clarified a bit more here. Um, so those are new. And then the only other piece that is different, on the last page, which was page thirty of the handbook, I did take out the signature and it just states, um, as student parent signature acknowledgement, I acknowledge I have received, read, or had it read explained to me and understand the Richland Center Primary School Student and Parent Handbook. And I did asterisk, this is part of the online Skyward enrollment process and acknowledgement. Any questions that you might have?
I'll just also add, just for all of the handbooks, again, just in super-registration and when the students register at the end of the year, uh, parents do have links to the handbook and they do sign off on the handbook electronically, and then as students get older, students also will sign off in some capacity on the handbook as, as well. So, um, anybody who does request a paper copy, we do provide that as well, but we are trying to take advantage of the electronic ability, it's on the website, and, and provide links to our policy instead of listing the whole policy out there as Mrs. Hardy referenced.
Can, for clarification, if you do look at this year's handbook and look at next year's, they are, the order is a little bit different because I did shift some items around in sequential order. Um, and then we'll also be working with Antonio to have this translated. And then both will also be on our website within the school too for parents to reference
Any questions for Mrs. Hardy, otherwise I'll turn it over to Mrs. Brown.
Um, so similar to what Mrs. Hardy has also shared, you know, updated some general information with our certain end times, uh, for next year. I updated the policy numbers to reflect our current seat, current policies, um, with Neola. Also added in the gestures piece. Uh, one area that I found as I was going through this year was our food. For some reason it still had soda in there, and so I missed that last year, so I did take out that soda caffeinated beverages pop that is not allowed in our building. Um, I did also take out our retention piece, um, that is still something that we can talk about, but it's not blatantly in our handbook. And then I did continue with the links as well. And then I actually do have in there our signature page, um, so they, students like Mr. Board was saying, parents will sign it online on Skyward, but I am actually keeping and adding back in there a student signature page and making that part, um, of what we're doing at RCIS, just for a little bit more accountability piece on both the parent and the student end. Of the order, I did change up a few things on kind of what was, uh, what I felt would be better of an order when it came to our discipline, um, type policies, but a lot of that didn't change with what was in there last year.
And then finally, high school admin, changes that you guys have, you folks have?
Yep. Let me see if I can, or summarize these quick, and then you may have some changes or some questions. Just kind of scroll with me and wait in for mine, but get back to the start here. So on page four, uh, page four would be a new proposed schedule, um, daily schedule from this year to next year. Page five, uh, would include a, a new proposed grading scale for next year. Um, bottom of page five also includes, um, some standardized, uh, grade weighting for courses so that kids have some similarities when they, when they move from room to room how their grades are calculated. Uh, page six includes a little blurb about, uh, using a similar student learning management system that was one of the things that we worked through in the curriculum committee last year, so that's in there. Um, pages ten to forty-nine are all of the old, um, bullying, harassment, non-discrimination policies and the new policies. So that's just a, that's simply a replacement from the old policies to the new policies. Um, and then I think if you get down to fifty-two, get yourself down to page fifty-two. Then we have some language in there about how, uh, decorating caps at graduation would be handled. There was some language there that came from student council. Uh, page fifty-two also has one slight change to the dress code, uh, number six telling our students that we do not want them to wear the sunglasses in the building during the day. Uh, page fifty-three includes some language on how we would handle, uh, grades if one of our students went overseas and was an exchange student and came back. It, it's, makes it black and white how we would handle those grades. And we're adding it in here because it was removed from our policy book, but we want to have it somewhere just in case, so it would still be here. Uh, page fifty-five, uh, there is just, uh, a short blurb about a community resource officer, so that, those wheels are in motion, so it's just an explanation in there that, just so people are aware, we're going to have one, and that's our general purpose of it. Uh, then I think we want to go to fifty-eight. And then fifty-eight is just, uh, the, the fee changes, which you guys have already seen and approved. No changes there. Uh, page fifty-nine has just some slight changes, uh, to, um, which students are allowed in the parking lots. We just said some old language in there that didn't really apply to the things we're doing today, so, so that's why I made that slight change. Uh, page sixteen, uh, we added, on the bottom of page sixteen, we added the language, um, students expected to keep their cell phone in their locker or in, or in the designated lockbox in the classroom. That's been our expectation, but it just wasn't spelled out explicitly, so we want to add that in. Um, page sixty-one is just a slight language change to work permits. The Department of Workforce Development is removing that from asking parents to go visit schools, and they want everybody to do it online now, so we're going to add that in just for this current school year, so people are aware of that change. And then, uh, page sixty-three, we added, uh, two, two new clubs. Um, these are clubs that were added last year, we're just adding them into the handbook, so they're listed along with all of the others. Uh, the bottom of page sixty-three has some slight changes to academic ineligibility, how we would treat some things differently between grades nine through twelve and grades seven through eight. Page sixty-four, um, lays out some information about, um, if a student is academically ineligible, uh, we want them in school as long as their school going on, basically saying that, putting that in there, which is, again, been a practice of ours, but we want to have it in the handbook. Also slight change bottom of sixty-four, um, just saying they got to have all their discipline obligations met before they can practice or be in any games. Again, that's a current practice, just want to have it in there. Page sixty-six, um, similar, similar vein here, current practice, we want to have it in the handbook. Students expected to attend games and wear street clothes, they may not participate in warm sort of competitions. Student must complete the season for a violation to be considered served. Again, that's, that's, we've been expecting that of kids, uh, but recognized some of that language was not in there. And I think that's it. So those are the thousand-foot views there of the changes, so if you have any specific questions, I or the other admin here will be happy to answer those.
So those are the revisions. A lot of times things will come up and we realize things aren't clear in the handbook, so these are always kind of a fluid document before approves them every year, and those are the revisions that are being recommended for twenty-three, twenty-four handbook, again with the exception that we need to approve the food service prices, um, at the next
Any questions for Board members? Is there a motion then to approve the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four student handbooks as presented?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mrs. Words, is there a second?
I'll, is it?
Ms. Traxel, any discussion? Mr. Dowdnaugh?
Nick? Aye.
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 Right. Onto nine D, instructional and coordinator positions for two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four.
Okay, so much like the handbook, these are also, uh, fluid, things get, uh, added or we realize that something has been done in the past for many years and was never in the handbook. And so, uh, these are the positions that would be, uh, look to be put in the handbook, you know, we want to get these posted. Um, changes, uh, would be Changes would be the check and connect coordinator. These are changes from last year or additions to the handbook. Checking connect coordinator, which was previously approved. The transition coordinator, this is something that has always been paid but was never in the handbook and just wanted to make sure it was clear and in the handbook and how well people are getting for stipends. And then the strengthening families facilitators, there's actually six of them. This is paid for from an AODA and OBO response grant, so as long as we have that funding, it's a new grant that we will be receiving or that looks like we'll be receiving. We want the handbook to reflect that, and that grant goes away, these positions likely go away as well. Everything else is exactly the same as what has been in previous handbooks, or handbooks that have been.
Any questions for Mr. Board? Is there a motion then to approve the instructional coaching director positions for 2023-24 school year as presented?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mrs. Wertz. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Dickman. Any discussion? Mr. Hunter?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Turn to nine E, timelines and options for the sale of Jefferson.
Okay, so at the Buildings Property and Transportation, well, let me back up a little bit. So the board had approved obtaining appraisal on the Jefferson Elementary property. That appraisal has come in, the email has been unopened, other than paying the invoice, okay? Buildings Property Transportation Committee, we took some options to that committee. You'll see the five options that I presented to that committee as kind of a starting point. The first two options kind of deal with bids. Option one being, let's accept bids, similar to what we did with Brockbridge and or Lincoln. Option one was do that, but don't release the appraisal. Option two was let's do that and just tell people, we just had this appraisal done, here's what it was appraised at. Option three was to list it with a Realtor. Option four was to use an auction site like wisconsinsurplus.com, or option five was, you know, to engage in conversations with the city and/or any other municipality, seeing if there was any interest from them. Through some discussion, option two was the option that the Buildings Property Transportation Committee endorsed, and I am suggesting that if the board approves option two, which again is to open it up for bids and to release the appraisal publicly, but before that appraisal is released and before any board members even know, my suggestion is that the board sets a minimum bid amount on what we're going to accept bids for based on a percentage of the appraisal, okay? So for instance, if it's $10,000 and the board says we're going to accept all bids at 75% of the appraisal, then we would accept any bids, you know, over $7,500, okay? And that would take out anybody that is consuming a lot of time with either myself, Mr. Jones, or any other administration on walkthroughs, gathering up information, past utilities, all that stuff, which we would be happy to do, but to keep people from then putting in a really low-ball offer just to see if they can get a deal on it. So whether that percentage is 50%, 75%, or 100%, I don't necessarily care. I would suggest, however, that whatever that is, that we round it to either the nearest $1,000 or $5,000 when we list that bid. So again, the recommendation from the committee, they did make one, a slight change in extending it from June, excuse me, July 31st into August. So the full recommendation would be that we would accept bids, open it up to the public, accept bids through Wednesday, August 16th at 4:00 PM. Those bids would then be opened and discussed in a closed session at the committee level on August 17th before that committee makes a recommendation to the full board on August 28th. And I did update the memo just to make sure that all board members knew that, you know, we would make sure that the specs did include our ability to decline and refuse any or all bids if we so choose. So even if they did meet the criteria, we would have the right to do that. And I think that's just safeguarding us to make sure that, you know, something inappropriate or something isn't going in a property that we owned, so. Any questions on what the recommendation is or what the thought process is? And if there aren't and the board is generally okay with it, then I would look at, you know, establishing a percentage of the appraised value, a value for a low amount, a low bid amount, and then do we want to round it to the nearest 1,000, 5,000, or 10,000?
Mr. Hunter, was there discussions at the committee as far as a percent or rounding?
We liked what Mr. Board suggested. 75% seemed like a reasonable expectation and obviously hope for higher, but I think we were in fairly consistent agreement. 75% was easy enough.
And rounding to 5,000 was, I don't know.
I don't know if there was any consensus, but I think all would be perfectly fine with any proposal.
How does the board feel about those? That percent, 75% rounding to the nearest 5,000? There's any difference that you all are thinking? There's, those two numbers sound good.
You okay with that?
Mr. Doudna, you've been around the longest. Have you gone through a sale property?
Fender dual.
What's your recommendation, just based on history?
It can go either way. We had one that was quite successful and one not quite successful. This is kind of like the happy medium and in-between of what we did for each instances before.
All right, well, is there a motion then to accept bid for Jefferson Elementary through 4:00 PM on August 16, 2023? With the appraisal released to the public, minimum bid amount shall be 75% of the appraised value rounded to the nearest $5,000 increment?
I'll make that.
Mr. Hunter made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion, questions, comments concerned? All right. Mrs. Dickman?
Aye.
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 I'll make a motion. We move into closed per Statutes 19.851(c) and or (f) as appropriate to consider employment, promotion, and compensation of employees for purposes of discussing individual employee hiring and compensation. Wisconsin Statutes 19.851-e for the purposes of discussing sale and or purchasing of public property, and Wisconsin Statutes 19.851-f, and Wisconsin Statutes 118.125 to discuss student open enrollment applications and individual pupil information related to those applications. The board may take action on these issues in closed session if necessary and appropriate. At the conclusion of closed session, the board will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
No question.
Discussion? Mrs. Wertz?
Aye.
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 Thank you.